Council work session of March fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Please call the roll.
Mr. Noel?
Here.
Ms. Zatra?
Here.
Ms. Weltman?
Here.
Mr. Daga? Mr. Lemay?
Here.
Mr. Gentile?
Here.
Dr. Wong?
Here.
Good evening, council and good evening, audience members, departments. The first pledge order on the agenda is to say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic through which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our first second agenda item would be the approval of the council minutes of February fifteenth, twenty twenty-three and the twenty-second. Do we have a motion, please, regarding the minutes of the fifteenth to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any roll call, please.
Mr. Noel?
I think this is the one I was not in attendance, right?
I act though. Yes, that is correct.
Yeah, abstain.
Um, Ms. Zatra?
Yes.
Ms. Weltman?
Abstain.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Gentile?
Yes.
Dr. Wong?
Yes.
Thank you, and a motion regarding the minutes of February twenty-second, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing then, uh, motion, uh, roll call, please.
Mr. Noel?
Yes.
Ms. Zatra?
Yes.
Ms. Weltman?
Abstain.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Gentile?
Yes.
Dr. Wong?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, next, we're looking for a motion from council to appoint our clerk Sheila Brett O'Connor as the council's designee to attend open records training on behalf of council. Uh, this is something we, uh, council's done before. There is a state requirement, obviously, that, uh, members attend open records training. Anyone is invited to attend the training, but by the appointment of Sheila and her attendance, we will certainly have a catch-all appointment that will satisfy the law.
You'll tell us everything you learned, Sheila, so that we can be fully informed. Great, we're counting on that. So every two years we have to do this or yeah?
Just tell us the new stuff.
Okay. They give me CDs that I can pass on, well-used to.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, roll call, please.
Mr. Noel?
Yes.
Ms. Zatra?
Yes.
Ms. Weltman?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Gentile?
Yes.
Dr. Wong?
Yes.
And thank you, and thank you to Sheila for her diligence in responding to, uh, open records requests that, uh, she often is the person overseeing. Next, we would seek a motion authorizing the service director to purchase equipment from Bill Equipment Company in an amount not to exceed one hundred and seventeen thousand, seven hundred sixteen dollars. This relates to a rubber, uh, rubber, a rubbish chassis, uh, using the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Group. Jim, you want to take us through this?
Um, I had something I know around the council, uh, concerning this. We got two bids to do this, uh, it's for the new rubbish packer that was approved last October, I believe, um, when the Western started chassis. The, we're actually wanting to accept the higher bid because we've had some issues with the two leach packers that we already currently own with some extensive repairs in the thirty thousand dollar range. And we also have one of these that we're asking to buy. And, uh, we haven't put any money into that one. It's a little older than the new one, never just done thirty thousand. So we're trying to, uh, get that back end repairs out of the, out of the mix.
Has the leach brand done anything to fix their problems, you know, or is it still the same?
No, it, it, a lot of it is rare and, uh, but it's, you know, it wasn't so bad when it happened to the first one, but when the second one came along and it's, I believe, the second one is seven years younger, then it's, you know, that's when it started to say, you know, we can't, can't have these. You know, so the other brand is a different, it, the bodies, that's the rubbish in a different form. And so there's, it's actually easier to work on and there's less maintenance on it, so.
Any, uh, any other discussion?
Is this, is the Sourcewell different than, I forgot that?
It used to be NJPA?
Okay.
Or, yeah, so it's, it's a national buying group. Sourcewell, NJPA turned into Sourcewell.
Okay.
So the only other one there is, is the state bid and, but you have to, you know, those are mostly complete trucks, not, um, customized, yeah, not customized, you know, so.
Sounds like a well-thought-out proposal, so I'll move it, or is there a move?
It's moved.
No, it isn't.
Any, any other discussion? Okay, um, roll call, please.
Mr. Noel?
Yes.
Ms. Zatra?
Yes.
Ms. Weltman?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Gentile?
Yes.
Dr. Wong?
Yes.
Thank you, and I appreciate, our appreciation to you, Jim, for your analysis of this and recommendation. And we will move on to our next agenda item, a motion for the service director to sell a Kubota scooter and a Peterbilt dump truck with salt body on gov deals. Jim, why don't you tell us about this, uh, equipment?
Um, this, the cloud truck has been, the new one is here in place and running. So this is surplus equipment, got about a hundred and ten thousand miles on the truck itself. It's a two thousand and six model, it's the oldest truck in the fleet and it is, uh, it's starting to cause a great deal of repairs on it also.
But it will be a fine asset for anyone looking on dot gov for a, for such a truck.
It runs well now, it's, they could drive it off the lot.
Okay, all right.
You think you're good for it?
Um, I want to say around ten thousand, I'm hoping.
Is that something with, with Phil?
This is a twenty nineteen model, I believe, has almost six thousand hours on it, which is pretty close to its end of useful life for us. Um, we get it sitting outside for quite a while and, uh, we got a new one finally came in after we were a year and a half ago, so, uh, just moving that one out.
Do you ever get bids from, for example, a southern state that would be okay with this? Because, uh?
With, for the truck, uh?
For the?
Yeah, yeah, we, they come from all over the country, so, uh, somebody drove the last one, I believe, to St. Louis. So you want to drive it that way. But, uh, this, and the scooter will definitely go over five thousand, historically they're more around six to six and a half.
Is it, when you say it's outside, is that the one that sits there?
Yeah, it just sits there.
Like the trash?
Yeah, it takes, it comes out of the location on the road because it's, this one currently has no air conditioning and the air conditioning broke about a year ago, so. It's okay for the winter, then.
With enough Red Bull and beef jerky, you can drive a truck all the way across the United States. All right, good.
Motion to approve?
Yes. Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Noel?
Yes.
Ms. Zatra?
Yes.
Ms. Weltman?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Gentile?
Yes.
Dr. Wong?
Yes.
All right, great. Uh, that takes us to the end of our regular agenda. Uh, we'll now move on to committee reports. Uh, the planning commission has met since we were last together. Melanie, could you report?
Sure, um, we had two items that came up. They were both returning items. One was for a variance for a front-facing garage, um, also a minor variance, more minor of one foot, for on the setback. Um, we had a very, very robust discussion and ultimately the variance was granted. I will say I was at the center, so I am happy to later, you know, we don't need to go into it now, then nobody wants to hear the whole thing, but if, I'm happy to go into detail on my personal position. Um, that was the first one, that's a house on Southwood. Then the second item, uh, was a little bit of a more unusual issue. It was, uh, the country club coming for a site plan approval. Um, it was not as much a, you might have, uh, heard about it previously from the previous meeting. It wasn't as much an issue of the site plan. They had cleared a large number of trees prior to coming to us. So all of this was contingent upon rectifying that situation. Um, they did a great job, I thought, finding out from, with aerial views, how many trees, give or take, were removed, which I thought was extremely impressive. Um, approximately eighty-eight trees. And so the idea was how do we restore the situation as much as possible? And I think a really good solution, I think, um, detailed conversation about replacing eighty-five trees to the property of, of good size, of a variety, of a number of varieties. Um, that will be kind of followed through with the city. So, uh, building department will kind of manage the replacement of the trees on the site. And if you, you can see where it happened if you drive on, on Lander Road. So that, um, ultimately that was, uh, approved and that was done, so that's it.
Thank you.
Say some more about the front-facing garages, because it seemed that, we get a lot of those and seems like my gut is they all get approved or most of them get approved, is it?
We don't get that many. Um, I mean, we did kind of a review there in the past ten years, at least, I mean, I think Sheila pulled them. There were, I think, approximately eleven, not all, a few of those weren't approved. A couple of them never actually happened. Um, the majority of the ones that were approved are pretty unique situations, like, for example, uh, a house on Thorn Apple, which was a much older house that already had two front-facing garages, was given a third one in part of an addition. So there are pretty unique circumstances to some of them. Another one, um, that was granted, and these are all in the past ten years, on Chagrin Boulevard across from the high school baseball, the high school, uh, JV baseball field, so a much older house way back, um, that probably also maybe historically had a front-facing garage way, way back. Um, but there are, there have been a few that were granted. Um, some of them weren't complete front-facing, they were like forty-five degrees. So it's a kind of mixed bag, if you will.
And what about this one caused you to?
I just tend to have trepidation with, with, um, the, the idea of practical difficulty in most circumstances, as it's read, as the ordinance reads. I, I personally didn't think it met that threshold. Um, it's a, you know, it's a pretty land-specific threshold, not individual personal difficulty. Um, so that was my position, you know, but.
That they could have built a side-facing without practical difficulties or?
Well, that maybe there was another way of, of solving the problem and, you know, and that sometimes you can't do everything you want to do. But, you know, it, it's a tough question, it's a tough call.
Yeah, and without, I, I think Melanie's given a fair description of it. Uh, the, uh, I think a very heartfelt discussion itself had, uh, on both sides. I think, uh, the commission, uh, other than, uh, the one dissent felt that there were significant practical difficulties with this situation. There's a creek that runs alongside the existing drive. The, uh, house is being built, or the extension is being built on the existing drive. And to get, to expand this home at all, it would have created a lot more hardscape and, uh, a greater variance into the setback area to get around to a rear garage. So, uh, now, I felt the other members of the commission felt there were significant practical difficulties that related to this particular lot. I think that, as Melanie described, uh, eleven or so, uh, circumstances over a decade. It's, it, it's, the infrequency almost proves the rule that it is rarely that these things are considered and granted. And so we don't feel, the commission, I certain, and I, I know Melanie agrees with this, uh, doesn't feel that we're tearing a scab off to suddenly make front-facing garages the rule and, uh, we have an ordinance regarding it. We have, uh, equally a provision that permits, uh, variances, given the correct circumstance, factual circumstances, and the commission felt that this was an appropriate time to do it.
Is there a cumulative effect of the grants that are?
I'm sorry, what?
A cumulative effect of when it's granted that, well, that's the precedent for the next grant?
No, no, variances are, uh, very fact-specific. They, we take care to describe when we do grant a variance and limit it to the factual circumstance of that lot, so that there is not a presidential value to them. Uh, with this circumstance, uh, the commission also required as a condition of it significant, uh, vegetative screening with the planting of trees, et cetera, on a, uh, on a curved driveway, so that, uh, we felt that you could obscure the entranceway uh, and that an affidavit of fact is in fact being filed accompanying the variance. Uh, so it becomes a matter of title record requiring, uh, this sort of screening and an ongoing maintenance obligation and replacement obligation. So it's a pretty skinny circumstance that we allow the variance and how we allow the variance. So I'm, I'm not concerned about a presidential value to it.
And my, my main issue is if you look at the language about what qualifies for a variance, um, it's supposed to be something that's really very unique and very specific to that property and wouldn't apply to other properties. I had some concern that it might apply to other properties.
This circumstance might.
Yeah, this circumstance would, could similarly happen in other properties. So that was one of my concerns. However, you know, it, every piece of property is unique and that's why the variance, you know, goes with the land. And, you know, on the flip side, that's why it's also important, because once a variance is placed, it's placed. So.
Could we, uh, go back to the country club?
Yeah.
The trees? Did they explain why they cut all these trees down?
I asked that question. Um, they didn't really, they just kept saying it was a really nice golf course and a really nice refresh, which I think it is. I think it's a very well-done refresh. But they did take these trees out and there wasn't really an explanation to give into how so many trees were taken out fairly quickly. Um, wasn't clear, but, you know, we ne, it happened without, I mean, I guess, I guess we, we, once they started working, I believe the building department told them to stop.
Yes.
But the trees had already been removed.
Trees.
Um, there was also some grading that was done too, but that was non-problematic. Um, so we were kind of left with the situation of now what do we do? Is, is what I would say. And how, and trying to figure out after things have been cleared, how many. But fortunately, you know, there are, on the internet, I mean, it was a very heads-up move, I thought, to go, and then you have to sort of gauge what kind of tree canopy was it. You, you're not going to be able to see, say, were they all healthy trees? But this is, this approximates, I am told, the number of trees that were removed. So hopefully, they'll fill in.
Yeah, it's troubling to me to see.
Yeah.
This isn't the first time it's happened where somebody decides to do what they want to do and then we, well, we'll, we'll suffer the certain, whatever the punishment is later. And we've tried to put some more teeth in our, our, our regulations here. What is the situation with that, Mayor?
Well, I have, uh, discussed with, um, let me, two points. One, the country club specifically, then let me get to your general question. The country club came in in December, uh, with a willfully inadequate site plan and description of how they were going to reforest, uh, the tree canopy, uh, that they'd been removed. And, uh, they were sent away to work on this issue. Uh, they got arborists involved, landscape people. I met with them a number of times. Uh, Mr. She got involved, our city arborist became involved. Uh, we handled this very seriously when it occurred. And, uh, thanks to, uh, Paul, our building official, for having recognized, you know, at least when it was going on and stopping it. And the grading was a problem. Uh, they had changed grade and then Don had to get involved and, uh, approve a grading plan. It was obvious that the, because of what they were creating, which was a new putting green, that there weren't going to be trees replaced where it was. Uh, so, uh, their initial offering, I think, was forty-five trees or less than that?
I think it was less than.
It was less than that than the initial plan. It grew to forty-five, then it went to fifty-five. It ended up at eighty-five. Our, thanks to Mr. She, particularly, us, the, uh, for establishing how much of the tree canopy had actually come down after the fact, which was excellent, outstanding detective work on the behalf of our city engineer. And I think it was a bit to the surprise of the, uh, club that we were able to reconstruct what, uh, they may have imagined was just gone. Uh, but we were able to reconstruct it. And that is what brought the number back up to, you know, basically what was, what tree canopy had been removed. Obviously, the tree can, the trees themselves, they can't effectively plant twelve-inch diameter trees and replace what was taken down. Uh, the old cliche, the best time to plant a tree is twenty years ago. So it's going to take a while for this to reestablish itself. There's a lot of wisdom to, that says by planting a slightly smaller, smaller caliber tree today, it actually, within five years, accelerates and exceeds the growth of a larger tree that you were to plant today. These issues involve, uh, the, the tree balls, the root system that you've now cut off on the larger tree, that they are less healthy and able to, uh, thrive. So, you know, some, there's a lot of discussion regarding that among the arborists as this process went on. And, uh, in the end, uh, there will be trees that, uh, one, over time, replace and exceed the canopy coverage of what was removed. Uh, the trees will be planted in such a way that they will provide, uh, substantial screening of, uh, the interior of the club property, uh, so that the neighbors, uh, who have the benefit of being in front of where the trees were removed are not going to have to, over time, uh, be observing, uh, the skill sets of people trying to chip onto the screen. And, um, it's a good solution to the, uh, question of how did this happen? I'm not going to sit and speculate as to the intentionality of this, but the club has been before us before to renovate other areas of their club. And, uh, I believe they're aware of our ordinances, so, uh.
And to be clear, not everything was on the, where they're, where they're doing the putting and chipping greens, some of them were just in the woods, where in the screened area.
So, uh, they are going to, uh, they're going to be replacing the, the tree canopy. In the end, I think that's what's important. And, uh, it just took a bit of work, uh, and co, and cooperative work with the club. The club, I'll say this for them, the club was always very cooperative, once called on this to, uh, get to, uh, an end where the, uh, canopy was being, uh, successfully restored over time. And, um, it's just, we can't change nature, it's going to take a few years for some of this to fill in. Uh, so that's just the way it is. Like a bone that has to heal, it's going to take a little time. How is that leg, by the way?
Broken.
Good.
Oh, go ahead.
I was, I was just going to ask, so the company who ultimately took down the trees for the club, were there any consequences?
Yeah, that's a, that's a different conversation that's ongoing right now.
Okay, good to know, thank you.
But yeah, that, that did come up briefly in the meeting, so.
Yeah, that's a, that's awesome. To Scott's other question about, uh, what do we do? How, how do we stop people from simply taking things down with the Maya culpa strategy in, in mind?
Forgiveness rather than permission?
Right, and, uh, when we were, council may recall, when we were reviewing the, uh, ordinances regarding the thirty percent, uh, uh, green space requirements for our institutional zoning and other things, we got into the whole tree ordinance conversation and, uh, Mr. Smarigan, uh, and I had proposed something that was pretty aggressive so far as, uh, tree replacement. And unfortunately, it coincided in time with some, uh, unfortunate Sixth Circuit decisions regarding, uh, trees and the ability of communities to regulate, uh, tree removal. And, uh, it's, it's challenging law. Uh, I've, in turn, particularly in light of this, uh, challenged Mr. Byron that we're going to have to come up with something else, you know, in the way of, uh, there's got to be a penalty. You just can't come in with Maya culpa. It, it, it's not satisfactory, because over and over again, the situation that I face is receiving that phone call after the fact, when, you know, someone frantically is calling saying, "They just chopped down all the trees on my neighbor's property." It happened within the last month on a lot being cleared for new residents. And now, whether they were overly aggressive, now, you got to take down trees to build a new house. It's, can't be built in the trees. But now, how aggressive is it? There are requirements of site plans already that we have regarding tree removal and tree plans. I, we're looking at, how can we, uh, toughen up the penalties involving people, you know, just decide to disregard their obligations?
What happened with the residents?
I, in the end, I don't know that. They took down a lot of trees for the house.
I think I know which one you're talking of.
Yeah, and, uh, I don't know, and the, uh, neighbor was pretty upset. Well, most of the trees that were taken, in fact, all the trees that I could tell, were legitimate for this rather large house that was now being built deeper into the property than the existing house that they had taken down. I to, empathize, totally understood her upset, I get it. When I got the call the next couple of weeks, that they were there taking down more trees, this time for a stormwater line or some sort of, some sort of line lateral that was going out to the street, I understood that too. And they didn't take, they cut it right next to the existing trees that were left in the fringe. And whether or not the root systems of those existing trees are going to be, are so damaged that they don't survive, it's, it's a challenging situation. People are entitled to develop their properties, build on them. And yet, uh, as a community, we want to preserve our tree canopy as much as we can. And we want to respect neighbors who, you know, don't need to see their, uh, side, side lot views just totally decimated. Even when it's the neighbor's trees that are being taken down, it's the neighbor's tree. It's their view, they don't own their view, because it's on the neighbor's property. But, uh, as a, uh, as a community that should have the laws in place that help protect the interests of those neighbors, just like we did when we adopted the, uh, the change in our setback rules, you know, where we affected the massing of a house to be a formula of height and distance from the side lot. Well, the purpose of that was to protect neighbors' interests. So, you know, now, is it tough enough? Should we be looking at making that even, you know, beefed up a little? Because the idea was to try to avoid the McMansion phenomenon and allowing, you know, enormous homes erected that diminished the quality. Homes erected that diminished the quality, either both the value of the home next door and maybe the quality of life of the person next door. And I think we've we've succeeded in some ways with the law that we adopted. I don't know that it is as robust as we could make it. It would require, you know. It would, in the end, affect even a larger setback. You'd have to play with the formula. And that needs to be evaluated, whether do we want to play with the formula? It works a lot of the times. You know, for the few times that it doesn't work, how how much are you going to get into changing the formula? It's it's art as much as science. So that's what we're doing.
And maybe there's a conversation to be had with Steve, you know, taking in to the sixth into into consideration of the Sixth Circuit about replacing some of these trees, even in the setback area. To, you know, to reinvest in our canopy, maybe there's a way that we can.
Right, right, exactly.
I mean, I think it's worth a worth a conversation because all of a sudden, we are seeing a lot of this development.
I think the reinvestment in trees, personally, I think that may be. Where I'd like to go with it. I think that's what what runs afoul of the Sixth Circuit decision, maybe. Because that's what was being required in that, I think it was a Michigan city in the sixth district. They were requiring, if I vaguely recall, like a four-to-one tree replacement or something like that. It was really, it was very significant, the tree replacement they were requiring. I don't remember the case exactly.
But maybe something.
You may, you saw that case.
Yeah, I did.
And there there was some significant either, it was more than a restriction on the takedown. It was a very aggressive tree replacement policy.
Maybe if it was nearer, they'll maybe thread a needle.
There's literal takings issues with that.
There are takings issues, right.
Which there are.
So, you know, and we have a, we live in a district where we have a court of appeals that's willing to engage that issue. Maybe. More so than I agree with, but they're the judges, I'm not, so.
We have so many water issues, so I mean, this is not doing us any favors if we divorce.
No, no, it doesn't do.
So.
It is, we saw in a Cuyahoga County study several years ago. Pepper Pike has suffered more canopy destruction than almost all communities in Cuyahoga County, largely because we had a few very large developments occur, sterling lights, et cetera. There were. Big chunks of land that got knocked down for development. And so as a percentage, diminished percentage, we suffered a large loss of canopy. I think our goal needs to be to try to preserve and restore canopy. As much as we can and encourage people to. Maintain their properties. To restore the canopy that they continue to lose on their private lots. Because most of our tree canopy exists on private property, not on city property. The only time we ever get to intersect with that is in, we have our four tree a year ordinance to take down and are when a site itself is being developed. Those are the really the only two points of intersection that I immediately recall is to when we get to directly try to control. Canopy issues. The other way we can positively control pan canopy issues is for the city to be planting trees whenever it can on, you know, the available public areas that we can, which is something we're going to be doing. And we have been doing it for a number of years. We've planted hundreds and hundreds of trees over the last several years. And we're going to continue to do that. So. That's all I got to say on that subject. I don't believe any other committees have met since we were last together. Department heads. Anything to report? Welcome Lieutenant here tonight again, who is the chief is finds himself out of town again this particular day, so welcome Lieutenant Colbert. We handled our. The last snow of the season, right? The last snow. No more. And how's Shaker Boulevard done?
Making steady progress.
Okay.
Around a little bit of weather, not too bad. They're marching along. Utility companies are marching along.
Good, because that's that becomes really the governor on the. End date of this thing. When the utilities are successful in removing and replacing utility poles that are in this stormwater right away. So I'm glad that they have finally decided to go to work.
When they when they show up in forests, there's a lot of.
Yeah, they get a lot done on the shore.
Do you have any idea when east of Landers is going to be open?
Right now, there's utility poles that that really is probably going to stay in one way for at least the next several months because.
Several months?
Yeah, because the utility poles that the utility work that's going on had gone on was from Landers West. They moved a lot of the pole employers and they're working on that section. And they have to go back to eastern side of Shaker and Landers.
So they did the opposite.
They did the opposite of what we needed them to do.
Now, because of timing wise, we had to get started with our construction. So we started, they started working on the sewer, otherwise we would have had to wait the entire project until they started working.
When we started, I think we started. Appropriately and when we were supposed to start. I do think, I'm glad that the utilities are here and they're doing their work. But. The commencement of our work was not a surprise to them. And it's just.
Could have been months ahead of us.
Could have been months ahead of us and they weren't, so.
We do have just on where Pepper Creek Drive comes out to Shaker, there's going to be some work. We'll we'll be impacting that exit point there as we do some work on the pump station. So we'll, timing wise, we'll send the, we'll do door hangers for that neighborhood, so everybody knows about it.
When when will paving and everything be complete, do you anticipate? I don't want to pin you down, but I just.
Yeah, I would I would like the sewer work to be done by, the sanitary sewer work to hopefully be done by May and the storm work by July.
The house on the southeast corner of Shaker and Pepper Creek, I think. Do you know if that house has a sewer or not?
Southeast corner. They are, they're currently on septic.
They're on, yeah.
And is Pepper Creek on sewer?
Yes.
Creek is, yes.
So is that? That property never going to have a sanitary sewer?
It's a good question. I think that house predated the subdivision. That house had a septic when they put the street in. They didn't, you know, put a connection to that house. And I think there there is a design issue why they haven't tied in.
Because didn't we end just before that?
Well, there's.
Have we started just before that on the? Southwest side of Pepper Creek?
Yes.
And the house, the house on the opposite, on the southwest corner of Pepper Creek is on sewer.
Yeah, they tied into the Pepper Creek sanitarium.
And has always been, I mean. They tied in it when, I guess, they probably put in the street at some point.
I can't recall the details, but there is a very good reason why they're not tied in.
But from that point east, they're all on septic, right?
Correct.
Yes, they are. And they won't for geographical reasons?
Yeah, it's a struggle to get it. And then you got to get across the actual Pepper Creek, which.
There's a whole other, yeah, okay. All right. That brings me to my comments. Since we last met, the. There's been a public announcement of the prospective sale of Beach Brook. It's, of course, not a closed deal. They have a number of unspecified contingencies that have to be satisfied. I am told that they're looking to conclude a closing by later in the summer. No date that I'm aware of. Until the deal is done, the deal is not done. So that's up to the parties involved to deal with their engineering evaluations. Can whatever their contingencies are, I'm not aware of what the contingencies are. The I I've spoken. As soon as I became aware of the sale, I did reach out and I spoke with the. Perspective owners of the property, the the school. Administrators and welcomed them prospectively to the community. And. I was told at that time that it was their intention to utilize the, what you'd call the developed southern tier of the property and not really make any development use of the. Midsection, which has the protected ravine and. Wetland areas from the creek in the middle, nor the northern tier. That is, that was good news to hear because it protects canopy. As. As it's been related in some newspapers, the city had been engaged in. Active negotiation with the owners of Beach Brook to acquire the property for the city's. Park purposes. And we felt we had been pretty far down a very positive lane to accomplish that when this new buyer who was successful arose and offered what I suspect is a dramatic number to purchase the property, which far would have exceeded anything that the city could contemplate. And that, but I told the owners, the prospective owners, that. I understood that they had a very large investment that they undoubtedly were making to acquire this property. And they might face other great expenses in rehabilitating or building new. Structures on the property for themselves. And that if a time ever came that they wanted to have a conversation. Regarding monet, trying to monetize some of their other acreage or all of their other acreage that the city certainly was. Quite open to having that type of conversation with them. And. I certainly didn't want to push it beyond that. These people haven't even closed on purchasing the property themselves. But they're they're aware of the the potential. And we'll just have to. See how things go. Sometimes you can't successfully negotiate with an old owner and you are successful negotiating with a new owner. And we will just have to see how things transpire over time. And I I don't think that the remaining acreage is in any immediate or foreseeable. Predicament that it's going to be. Damaged or cut. So the the canopy issues, as they relate to our prior conversation, are safe and for the foreseeable future. And we will. Just let time do what time does and we'll see where we end up. All right, and. I also have, we are proceeding with our Taste of Pepper Pike. Plans for late June. Is going to be held once again. I've finalized that with Ursulon College. It'll be, the setup will be very similar to what we have done before. We're already getting, we're being solicited already by some very. Good restaurants who want to come back and participate again and which is lovely. And.
Perhaps we should have a council tasting to select those restaurants.
I I will, I'll investigate that and see if they want to give away free food to council. I can ask them that. But short of that, all the council is invited to participate at Taste of Pepper Pike. And. It should be a great time. Before that, though, the first big event for the summer in June. Last year, we partnered with Ursulon College. To create a first-ever celebration of Juneteenth. And the college has asked us to partner again with them for that very successful event last summer. And that will be again conducted on the Ursulon campus. The date is, it's not on Juneteenth, it's either the day, I think it's the day before Juneteenth. I'd I'd have to check our calendar, it's a few months off, no one has to worry about it today. But there will be that that event coming up too. Is and we're. Doing all the other fun things that we do for the summer. And that's really all I have to. Discuss this after this evening with council. Does council have anything? Any audience comments?
I have a couple of questions.
Before you start.
Go ahead.
We have a new feature tonight, you're the first one to use it.
Oh, goodie.
Because we are streaming live, we don't have it anyway for the people at home to listen to you, so. If you would just ask your question, that's right.
This is Scott's Phil Donahue routine?
A former talk show host.
Former talk show host.
Nothing scandalous. Luanne Graham, three one four three seven Shaker Boulevard. To the tree canopy thing. When. And if Beach Brook is sold to Heritage Christian Academy.
I and I have no. I I'm, I have fairly high level of confidence, not knowing the details. I expect it will close.
Yeah, but when and if it should?
Right.
Would the city to preempt? What happened at the country club where the country club went in and cut down eighty-some trees? And then went, oops, are bad. And I think the same thing happened when they built Waterway. They cut down a bunch of trees and then went, oops, are bad. Will someone have a talk with? The new owners of Beach Brook and say, hey, listen, before you get. Tree happy. You know, we have some. Method, you know, ordinances in place that you can't just willy-nilly. Get out, go in and start cutting down trees because you want to build a tennis court. Is that something that will be preemptively done with the new owners?
Absolutely, it's the conversation. When, once they become new owners.
Yes.
Yes, that that would be a conversation that would be had.
Okay.
And as and as you may or may not know, we have, since it's on institutional property, zone property, there is a thirty percent green space requirement. Now, if they have the whole rest of the property. You know. Achieving a thirty percent figure. Is is very achievable. Because they have two-thirds of the property that is, you know, in woods right now. So they they could, they'll still be limited by their four tree per year limitation. But so far as the overall development of the property, no.
I'm glad they bought the property as opposed to somebody like Axiom, who would have cleared, that would have been clear cut by now. Had.
Well, they had, if you recall, they had set aside twenty-two acres in the in the central portion of the property to dedicate, basically, as parkland.
It still would have been a.
That's a third of the property, right.
Okay, and then is there any update as what's going on with Ursulon? They haven't started building.
Oh, you mean the Medina Creative Living Project?
Yes.
Yes, they are, I can report to you on that. They have submitted plans to the Architectural Board of Review, which were approved. And I anticipate they'll be making an application. Board of Review, which were approved, and I anticipate they'll be making an application for final site plan approval to the Planning Commission with those plans in hand.
Is it substantially different from what they had originally planned? Like size-wise?
I don't know when your original was, it's not substantially different from what was approved, reviewed and approved preliminarily by the Planning Commission the last time we met with them.
Well, I mean, the original plans where they had the, they showed the type of house that was going to be built.
Yeah, I did, I know the, they'd been in front of us a couple of times, and I know that the, it changed from the very first time they were in front of us, it had changed from that, and, but the last time they were in front of us at the Planning Commission level, that was very well received, I think, by the Planning Commission and the Architectural Board of Review. They, that was a little sketchier, that design, they had a general, this is kind of what it's going to look like, they've now fleshed that out for, with architectural drawings, that I understand the ABR approved.
Is any of that on the Pepper Pike website that citizens can look at?
The, do we?
The minutes are on there.
The minutes are on there.
If you search Medina Creative, I was thinking in the search, they should come up.
But there's no drawings or anything?
No.
Okay. And I do live on.
The drawings are, if you want to visit the building department, the drawings are on file there.
Okay. I do live on Shaker Boulevard, I live between Lander and ninety-one.
Right.
And I did have some questions as, I don't know that, I've seen anybody from the utility company out moving any telephone poles in a month, is there any plans when they're going to resume?
Have they been east of Lander?
They stopped that, they haven't.
All their work has been west of Lander. A quick note, they've placed new poles east of Lander, all of the new poles that are going in are physically in the ground, so.
Even from Lander to ninety-one?
Well, they don't go all the way to ninety-one.
Well, so.
Yes, yes, the new poles are in.
Okay.
They just haven't switched over, their wire crews haven't, haven't started transferring wires on that section yet.
And is there any particular reason why, because most of the road has been reconcreted, there are four sections that I counted on my drive here that are waiting for concrete, and one sewer drain that still looks like it needs to be put in. Why they're now concentrating on this side, not finishing that up, so that we could get two-way traffic on that section?
We're not putting two-way traffic back on that section, because we're going to be starting the storm sewer work after the utility poles. So, there's really, there's really not a good opportunity to go to two-way traffic, there will be utility trucks, first energy trucks parked in that zone on the south side of the road over the next, over the next several months.
And so there, they'll be just stringing wires?
They'll be stringing wires, they, they'll be, there's some locations where they have to run new, new down connections to some of the houses that have underground service, things like that, too.
But until, to clear up any confusion in that conversation, until they transfer the wires, the contractor can't install the storm line, which is underneath where those old poles are.
Oh, I understand that.
Okay, I just want to make sure that was clear.
Because I didn't, I didn't realize that all the poles had been put in, because I don't think there's one across the street from me.
I have to take a look, but I believe every, every new pole has been set.
They may not have to reset the pole across the street from you?
No, there's, they, they have, they stake where they moved it back.
I'm not going to, I don't know, I can tell you a hundred percent for sure, but I believe every single pole was set, it could be one or two, that there's, for whatever reason, it held off on the reset.
So you have no, but a luminating company is just doing it when they feel like it?
No, I mean, they're, they're making progress, let's put it this way, if there's a big huge storm and a big power outage, we are not the priority, they're going to.
Oh, I understand that.
So, we are on, we are a priority, I know that there's other projects in and around this area that have not got illuminated, coming through them because they're working on them. I think we're first on the list for any kind of step.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Peg Herenick, two-nine-three-hundred, Shaker.
I'm sorry, please address.
Pardon?
I missed your address.
Two-nine-three-hundred, Shaker. Two questions, I'm, on first name basis with AT&amp;T. In five weeks' time, I've had my lines cut twice and broken once. First time, it took them like four days to get out, the next time it was three days, the next time it was four hours, so they're getting better. He came out, he was going to put the wires on the pole, but he said the pole isn't stationary enough, he couldn't put his ladder on it because he didn't know if it would hold his weight getting up there, so I don't know what they're doing with the pole in my yard on that. Last night I came home from a very lovely evening and got stuck for twenty-two minutes coming off of Lander onto Shaker between nine-thirty and ten. They were working. Isn't there a very, noise variance for Pepper Pike? There used to be.
What?
A noise variance.
Yeah, what time was this going on?
Between nine-thirty and ten o'clock last night.
At night?
It took me twenty-two minutes to get from Alboard to my house.
They had a broken water connection, Cleveland Water Department came in and did the repair.
That was Cleveland Water.
Okay.
Shut it down.
That's the third broken water that we had.
Yeah.
And they took down my electrical line, my landline, my internet, yeah, and the guy from AT&amp;T said if they did, I was going to have to pay. They told me that too, but the, his name is Ross, I don't know where he is now, but he said he'd work with me if I was charged by AT&amp;T. But he also told me.
And why are they, why are they threatening to charge you?
Because they're coming up so often, and it's not their fault.
It's not your fault.
No, I called Vetchco when it happened to me, and the guy from Vetchco was actually pretty rude, and said that, I said, well, it's, you know, it'll be four days, I said, my husband sometimes works from home, my husband's a radiologist, he needs the internet connection. And then the guy from Vetchco was like, well, they'll get out when they get out, and he goes, it's not our fault, it was the dump truck that took out the line, it's their fault, you have to go after them. I'm like, now, what, now I got to track down dump truck companies?
No, you don't have to, you, Pat, you don't have to track down anyone. Don, could you, Don's taking notes, Don's going to look into all of this, and.
I helped the service department to get somebody, his name is John, wonderful.
Thank you.
Wonderful.
Yeah, Pepper, Pepper Pike isn't your source of frustration in this, it's.
But Pepper Pike has to know about it.
No, we do need to know about it, and that's why Don is going to be interacting with the contractor about this, there's. You residents do not have to go chasing around finding which contractor am I supposed to complain to, that's absurd, you don't have to do that, I'm telling you that. If it ever gets to that, you contact us and we'll, you know, speak up on your behalf regarding these things. If you haven't been talking to a contractor, fine, have the conversation, but this is not, there will be water breaks from time to time, you know, that's a function of a very large construction project, with excavations that can go down twenty, thirty more feet into the ground, and what happens is, there are very old water lines that run up and down, some of these water lines, how old are your water lines, I'm not sure?
Fifties, nineteen-fifties.
Yeah, so these are sixty, seventy-year-old water lines, and their fine salons are undisturbed, but in the course of the excavation, when you disturb the soils around them, what appeared to be a functioning water line, they're brittle for the age, and if they flex a little because the support they had received from the earth around them, you know, is loosened, all of a sudden you get a crack in a line, and you have a water line failure. These, these things really can't be, you know, predicted, it does, it has happened, and it'll continue to happen periodically, I would suspect during the course of this construction. Cleveland Water, to their credit, has been marvelous, and I know it's inconvenient when they're here, but they've been marvelous in getting out here very promptly and within hours, trying to resolve these water line issues, we should be very appreciative of their response time, they, they've really been terrific about it. The, but you don't have, this fight isn't something for you to have with the contractor ever, and don't feel you have to, okay? You deal, we, we'll stand up and deal with you guys on your behalf for this, okay?
Well, and, and I can touch base, Don, there has, there has seemed to be a shift in the, I guess, personnel who are working on the street and how they're moving the traffic, I live near both of you, so there might, it might be just a conversation, you know, what's happening, how, how they're moving the traffic, you know, it's probably different people doing different work at this juncture than were doing the work when they were really digging, so it's, it's kind of, I've noticed this also.
Yeah.
My granddaughter was home from college, and she was on Lander, and the flagman told her, go around, because you might be sitting here for a while, she said, it's closed, and he said, go around, it'll be faster, so she came around, and the police department was there and said, no, you can't go that way. Forty-seven minutes in all it took her to get back, she sat on there, came around, had to go back and sit again to get to the house.
Yeah, I don't know how recent that occurred.
Last week.
Last week, well, it was around last week or so, near, near, in that time, we've had some very significant, the police have had, Donna's had conversations with the contractor about misdirection they're giving the motoring public about this sort of thing, and hopefully that confusion is cleared up. That's why you will see trucks backing into Shaker Boulevard, the eastern section of Shaker Boulevard, instead of turning head-on into it, because it was confusing traffic and thinking, oh, you can go up this way, and they'd have cars following them, so now they're now backing into Shaker Boulevard. It's, it's a challenging construction project, and we try to, when things go sideways, it could be for the reasons Melanie described, that different crews, different procedures that they think, and they're not, if, if they would always do what the program is and is described, there wouldn't be these, a lot of these problems, but sometimes the contractor doesn't follow the rules that they helped establish, and it's unfortunate, but it's just a daily thing that we have to deal with, that's all, that's, that's why we have a police department and engineers to deal with these things. So, thank you for your patience, share it with your neighbors, I'm happy.
Very, my patients are very much afraid of that.
Anyway, all right, well, thank you for coming and sharing with us tonight. Okay.
Did you find out anything on the sidewalks survey?
The survey, we have the early returns in, it is not, the report isn't finalized, I can share with you, I guess, that there's been an extraordinarily enthusiastic response to the concept of sidewalks on the major streets. So that, but, you know, I, the report isn't finished, and that's the most I've said about it publicly to you or to council, but you asked the question, and I'm giving you the answer that I have.
We'll just wait till the final?
It'll be probably end of next month that we have a final report, I'm guessing. Okay? And with that, I think we're to the end of our agenda, and we are adjourned.